Where'd Judy go? Am I missing Judy? Am I the only one missing Judy?
No, she's not. She's not on.
Okay.
She might have hit the wrong button.
She's making her way back in right now.
Okay.
Okay, are we good?
There she is.
We can see you now.
I kept getting a pop-up and it was just... All right, are we live?
Yes, we are.
Okay, I'm calling the meeting to order. We'll have start with pledge with Mrs. Hargis.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Michelle. We're going on to 2.2, welcome and announcements. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 1st meeting. I would like to explain the reason for moving from in-person to virtual for tonight's meeting. It is with great sadness and disappointment that I have to say that due to a very nasty, serious, and dangerous threat to a board member and their family, some board members felt that this was the safest way to meet for that board member and the patrons that would have attended the meeting. We certainly do not like to meet in this manner. We would prefer to be in person with you all in attendance also. We do thank you for your patience and understanding, and we look forward to being back in the service center on February 15th. Okay, and we're gonna go on with introductions. Starting with Brock.
Kelly Brock, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources.
Sammy Cardona, Assistant Superintendent Secondary.
Paul Frigo, Superintendent.
Randy Gilman, Assistant Superintendent Elementary.
Ethan Graham, Board Secretary.
Jim Shaloo, Board Member.
John Stewart, Chief Financial Officer.
Michelle Chamberlain, Board Member.
Vicki Hanson, Board Member.
Crystal Hargis, Vice President. April Meckel, Board Member.
Carol Yacht, Board Treasurer.
And Judy Smith, Board President. Moving on to 2.3, approval of the agenda for February 1st. I need a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda, Hanson.
Second, Chamberlain.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? 2.4, approval of meeting minutes from January 11th, 2022. I need a motion to approve those.
Motion, Chamberlain. Second, Meckel.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? 2.5, approval for the minutes for January 21st, 2022. I need a motion.
Motion, Chamberlain.
Second, Yacht.
All in favor?
Yes.
Anyone opposed? Moving on to 3.1, recognition of Impact Life Blood Drives and Toys for Tots. Dr. Cardona.
So, thank you. I would like to introduce, as we're bringing him in from the waiting room, Tim Schwab. He actually helps with the Impact for Life Blood Drive that happens at Sekman High School. And he's gonna share some information. You know, we love to share information from our schools where we are impacting our community. And this is just one example. I know another thing that Sekman High School does is the Toys for Kids. So, I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Schwab and let him share the information about Impact for Life. So, thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name's Tim Schwab. Can everybody hear me?
We can.
Awesome. Did David Chambers make it on?
David Chambers is here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. So, we're both with Impact Life Blood Center. Like I said, my name is Tim Schwab. I'm a donor relations consultant, and this is David Chambers. He's a donor... What's your title, David?
Crewbit Development Coordinator.
And we both cover the St. Louis area. I primarily cover the South County area, and David's all over the place. So, with that, we'll get started, and David will take the first slide if you want to transfer to the next one.
So, thank you again for having us. We're honored to be able to be here. A little bit about Impact Life. We were established in 1974, and we're now serving more than 125 hospitals in Illinois, Iowa, Missouri, and Wisconsin. We are a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit organization, and we were previously known as Mississippi Valley Regional Blood Center until within the last year, we changed our name to more in line with our mission to impact life. So, we're known all in these four states as Impact Life. Next slide, please. Impact Life Service Region. So, we're the provider exclusively for 126 hospitals. 27 of those are in the St. Louis region. Some of those just are highlighted below, and they're including SSM Cardinal Glennon Children's Hospital, SSM St. Clair Hospital in Fenton, Mercy Hospitals in Jefferson and Festus, and Mercy Hospital, South County, SSM St. Louis University Hospital, and also St. Luke's Hospital. We exclusively provide blood to all of these hospitals. So, we're excited about that, and next slide, please.
If you guys get the slide deck, that link on the bottom there will take you to a link to all of our hospitals in St. Louis, as well as all of our hospitals in the four states, okay? We're just recently became a partner with BERC, which is the Blood Emergency Readyness Corp. What that basically is, is if there's a mass casualty, national disaster, large-scale event that needs a lot of blood, different blood centers are putting back a certain X amount of units in their blood bank that can be pulled very quickly to respond to that emergency. Now, that does transfer around to different blood centers, and off to the right there, you see part of the state, and I think they're cut off by our pictures. But there's a lot more on the East Coast there also. But, so if there's a natural disaster that needs a lot of blood, the BERC program would help supply that because I think it's six weeks out of the year throughout different timeframes of the year. We're putting 20, 30, 40 units of blood on the shelf specifically for that program that is not touched until our timeframe of us covering the BERC program is over, and then it goes back into normal rotation. Next slide.
So, I'll mention and get us started on the lifesaving program, which is the school grant program. We get about 20%, believe it or not, of the nation's blood supply, blood supply from our hospital or from our colleges and high schools. So, it's a super important partner with us. So, we are honored every time we can do a school or college. The program entails, schools can receive $250 per blood drive, per blood drive, collecting a minimum of 20 units of blood, then you qualify for the 250, and then you also get a dollar per donated blood collected. You can use that with many things. They're highlighted below, the ways that you can use that. This is called the Lifesavings Grant Program. Fox High School, since 2012, we presented, have the privilege of a partner presenting $3,189 in scholarships. Sekman has been, since 2016, $2,906. So, we are glad to do it, and that's a bunch of lives saved. So, next slide, please.
Yep, and I know for the most part, I believe both schools use it for scholarships funds. I want to say Fox may also use that for a charitable donation. So, as you can see, some slides coming up there from the most recent senior, or Fox Senior High School drive back in November. Basically, on the left is the entire history of the Fox High School drive with us. Over the past decade, we've had 1,231 donors present at the front, and we've collected over 1,000 units, helping up to 3,084 patients in local hospitals just from Fox High School. Next slide. More pictures from the most recent blood drive at Sekman High School. They've only been going for seven years, but they do two blood drives a year, and they're already almost 1,000 registered donors and 866 actual donations, helping over 2,500, almost 2,600 patients in local hospitals. So, great job to both high schools there. And if we get to the next slide.
So, the next slide is the KSHI 95 blood drives. They have been going on for years and years, and the last seven years, there's been 26 blood drives held at the Fox C6 Service Center. So, we partner with KSHI for critical times of the year, July and December, to have this, have these blood drives. It's strategic because these are times that are really hard to collect blood. We're, this is one of the nation's largest and longest-running blood drives. We've got eight locations across the St. Louis area, collect more than 2,000 donations over two days. It's held, like I said, during the critical timeframes, July and December. Fox C6 Service Center is the busiest location. I have the privilege of being over that location as the ambassador. And back in July, one of our very first donors, if not the first, was Dr. Paul that came and donated. I got a chance to meet him, and he was right in there. I mean, one of the first ones. We had a great turnout that time. Tim's always trying to catch us out in St. Charles, but I don't ever see it happening. So...
Not either.
Keep trying, Tim. Congratulations to Fox C6 and KSHI for their partnership. Next slide, please. So, the KSHI blood drive super makes a huge difference, and along with Fox and Sekman. KSHI collects 4,516 donations since we've been doing the blood drives. Fox has collected 1,028 donations, Sekman 866 donations, total of 6,410 donations total, helping 19,230 patients help. So, that's outstanding and very, very appreciated and needed. So, thanks again to Fox Sekman School Districts for all you do for us, and with the KSHI and the blood drives with you guys. So, next slide, please.
Okay, so the main reason we're on the calls, because back in November, myself and David Plyman came up with an idea. He's a teacher over at Fox High School for a blood drive trophy. It's a traveling trophy that goes back and forth between Sekman and Fox High School. Mr. Plyman challenged Mrs. Woolsey to the challenge, and she said yes, and it was on from there, and Sekman took it. We produced this trophy. It's, if you think of a Stanley Cup, it's got room for 12 years' worth of blood drive tags on. So, this thing, this specific trophy, which is actually in the hands of Sekman right now, is gonna travel back and forth between the two schools for the next 12 years. And trust me, Sekman wants to hold on to it. The fox is coming strong for the next blood drive. Next slide. So, if you caught it in the slides earlier, Fox had 77 donations in their fall blood drive back in November. Sekman came on pretty strong with their next blood drive. They actually set the school record for blood drives with 110 units, 118 registered donors, overall a total of 187 donations, 561 patients in local hospitals helped just from one blood drive, and we're coming strong for the next spring one. So, great job to both high schools there. With us going to the Zoom call, I decided to make a trip out to the school today and present the trophy to the Sekman National Honor Society. If you move our pictures, if they're on the right, you'll see Dr. Paul on the right, and Miss Woolsey on the left over there. I'm in the center with the trophy. That's, I believe that's almost all of the National Honor Society for Sekman High School. They all came in, and we got in one classroom, and somehow we got the picture in there. We don't know how we did it, but we all got in the picture. So, it was a great presentation. Sekman High School is raring to go. They wanted to run that trophy up and down the hallways. So, if there's any questions, we'll take some questions. Other than that, you know, we definitely look forward, come out to the blood drives, say hi to us. I'll be at both the high school blood drives typically work in the front area, and David works the KSHI drives. Come out and see him. Unless you live in St. Charles, you can come see me.
So, Dave and Tim, I would like to thank you for joining us. You know, our high schools are good at that healthy competition, and there's nothing like healthy competition that also has a benefit of helping our community and the larger community, right? So, wow, the amount that's been donated. So, and I want to make a shout out to Mr. Plyman and Mrs. Woolsey for their insight into this, and let's keep up, let's keep up the challenge and keep up the healthy competition. So, all it does is benefit our community. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So impressed is over 19,000 lives impacted by the work of our two high schools and the service center, and very proud of that, and appreciate your work to help, help the community. So, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. 3.2, patrons' comments. JP?
Yes, we had several patron comments this evening. Due to the virtual nature of the meeting, we asked patrons to send in their patron comment form along with their written statements, and I am going to read those patron comments at this time. Our first comment this evening is from Jim Osha. His comment reads, "Good evening, and thank you for your time. I have three things I would like to bring up tonight. One, I would like to ask the board to utilize a visible timer for patron comments. It could either be visible on the projector screen or on a monitor or digital display on the table by the timekeeper. This could help the speaker in maintaining the three-minute time limit. I've seen other boards or councils utilize this method. Two, I hope that the board honors the mitigation policy of the 2% per building threshold. This allows for consistency and less confusion for students, staff, and parents. When the district-wide masking went into effect, only half the buildings were at 2%, not all the buildings. I still think it should be up to the individual to mask themselves if one so chooses. Masking healthy people just doesn't make sense. Three, the emergency board meeting on January 21st had some board members acting very unprofessional, too downright arrogance. There were board members being cut off or not allowed to speak at all. One board member's actions was distracting and interfering with the flow of the meeting. Their attention wasn't solely to the matters of the meeting, but elsewhere. Also, if you're going to require masks, shouldn't one be wearing a mask, especially in a school setting? Two other board members' actions were very dismissive and downright rude. One interrupted another while speaking and stated along the lines of, quote, 'We all know how each of us stand, and we have a motion that needs voting on,' end quote. The community needs to know where each board member stands and not relay on assumptions or interferences or inferences. As a member of an elected council, I was appalled and upset at this behavior of some that deem themselves professional and educated. These members need not only apologize to the board for their actions, but also to the community.' The next comment this evening is from Brandon Williams. Again, I'll read these all exactly as they are written. "There has been a disturbing pattern of behavior that has been displayed at the last two BOE meetings. The meeting held on January 11th, Mr. Shaloo lashed out at the patrons in attendance to basically be quiet and keep your opinions to yourselves. Then, under his breath, but into the microphone, he said, 'The days of people being rude is about to come to an end. Feel free to re-watch this meeting on YouTube. It's clear. This is unacceptable. The reason why us people are being rude is because you won't listen to us. You have forgotten, or quite frankly, don't care who you're supposed to represent and continually ignore us. The special board meeting on January 21st was yet an even more disgusting display of disrespect, but this time to your fellow BOE members. The way you treated Judy and April was horrendous. How dare you interrupt them and censor their opinions? You're supposed to be the example and the leaders for our district. Is this the type of behavior you want our kids, teachers, and staff to display? And you wonder why the people lash out at you during BOE meetings. Look in the mirror. It's because of you and your actions. Hargis, Young, Shaloo, Chamberlain, and Hanson completely disregarded the recommendation of Dr. Frigo. I'm not sure why the board doesn't let our superintendent implement his plan. You hired him for a reason. Stop discussing his opinion and act like you know better than everyone else. You consistently display your own fear, feelings, and personal agenda. Your job is to listen to the community and as representatives of your constituents, listen to all sides, not just the ones that fit your narrative. You have yet to show the public the data that proves masks work. The CDC has already expressed cloth masks are ineffective. Are you going to provide every student, teacher, and staff member with N95 masks every day? If you truly believe in the masks and ultimately want to provide the highest level of safety, this would be the obvious choice, right? How can you continue to enforce mask mandates when the courts have ruled this to be unconstitutional? I assume you enjoy using our tax dollars to fight against the community. You all get very upset when the public speaks out of board meetings. Well, maybe they wouldn't if you would just show us some respect. Why would we even approve a tax increase levy, et cetera, to help the district when you don't respect the kids, teachers, staff, and community? As I always say, the people of this community have taken note, and we are very eager to go to the polls on April 5th. Our voices will be heard that day, and change is coming. As usual, you will not address any of this and move on to the new patron comment or order of business." The next patron comment is from Shannon Vessels. "Thank you to the opportunity to share my thoughts tonight. I'd like to talk about the lessons this board and administration have tried to teach our students this year. One, stay afraid. Your unmasked friends and classmates all have the potential to make you very sick. Two, policies are meaningless and will change as soon as it doesn't fit your agenda. How long did the 2% building policy last anyway? Three, the overall well-being of children should take a backseat to what makes the adults feel better. After all, feelings matter more than facts, right? Four, people who don't know them at all are better equipped to make decisions for them than their parents, who know them and love them more than life itself. Five, the board deserves kindness and respect unless you yourself are a board member. Then you can be as unkind and condescending as you want to your fellow board members. On the other hand, I have also been teaching them lessons that I hope will last instead. One, I have taught them the definition of insanity and how it applies to public policy. Two, they're also learning to be critical thinkers who never blindly follow due to perceived authority. If something doesn't sit right with them, I want them to research, ask questions, and explore differing viewpoints. Three, fear is a liar, and it is no way to live for the short time we have on this planet." I'd like to end with a quote from the article, "The Cult of Masked Schoolchildren," by Dr. Vinay Prasad, University of California, San Francisco. Quote, "When the history books are written, we will not look wise or kind for insisting that kids and toddlers wear masks for hours on end, year after year, without ever testing this policy with controlled trials. We will look ignorant, cruel, fearful, and cowardly. We might even look worse than our primitive ancestors, who, when faced with great plagues, engage in all sorts of bizarre, superstitious behavior, but which rarely included making kids suffer most," end quote. Enough is enough. It's time to follow those that are transitioning to an endemic approach to this virus. It's time to give our kids their childhoods back." The next patron comment this evening is from Beth Presovento. "Tonight, I urge you not to extend the district-wide mask mandate. Extending this mandate would be an utterly bad decision. At the board meetings on January 11th and 21st, it seemed evident that Dr. Frigo did not want that. I presume this is because of, one, recognizing that masking was being handled per the existing 2% rule anyway, and, two, the experts with whom he spoke said the cases would likely spike quickly in mid-January and then fall just as rapidly. To the dismay of nearly everyone, it was clear that several board members were insistent on forcing all kids into masks, and Dr. Frigo was again railroaded. As of this afternoon, the total case count for the district is 30. That's right, only 30 in a campus community of over 12,000. While many of our schools hit the 2% mark in January, some buildings never did. Right now, there are no schools, zero, who are even close to 2%. At all, but one building has fewer, three or fewer cases. 12 of the 20 building locations have zero or one case. Why should these kids keep getting punished over the personal fear of board members? Kids who have been miserable at school for the better part of two full academic years over our district's COVID policies were brought back to life in November when the district moved to optional masking. The life has been sucked out of them once again with these mask mandates. Some members of the board will try to say the cases in certain buildings went down after masks were imposed. There is zero evidence to support that as a cause. Do not allege that, quote, 'If we take our foot off the gas with masks, then cases will go up,' end quote. You cannot possibly know that, and even experts are now stating that these masks are doing little, if anything, to stop the spread. We are simply dealing with the natural progression of what is now, thankfully, a mild virus for the overwhelming majority of people. Also, keep in mind that Jefferson County peer districts that haven't had mask mandates at all have frequently done better than us in terms of their positivity rates. All but one have gone the entire year without a total mask mandate of any kind, only similar 2% type rules, and some have even dropped all contact tracing. This board has brought up the acceptance of at-home tests. There is a reason that nearly all establishments do not accept these. They cannot be verified. I personally reached out to the Jefferson County Health Department to ask about at-home tests. I provided you with the full exchange, but the key message was this, quote, 'At this time, at-home positive test results are considered suspect,' end quote. And people seeking a confirmatory or diagnostic test should contact their doctor and/or go to a proper certified site. It would be inappropriate for a district to accept at-home tests. Again, I urge you not to extend this mandate. This is what the community wants, and you know that. The relationship between the district and the community that people fought so hard to repair over the past few years is again shredded. We can rebuild it, but it starts with respecting the parents and our right to choose what works best for our families. We are here because we care about our kids, and we want our district to succeed. But why should we continue to support a district that doesn't support us and our rights to make our own decisions for our children? Why would we support a future tax increase when we are being ignored? The past two years have broken so many kids, not from COVID, but by the policies that have been put into place because of it. We are tired of what the board is doing to our children and pinning their fears on them. It isn't their burden to carry, and it never was. This must stop, and the time is now." Our last patron comment this evening is from Amanda Denning. "Hello, my name is Amanda, and I am a parent of two young children at Fox Elementary. I wanted to write in tonight to share my frustration at the current COVID mitigation process and plan. At the last emergency board meeting, I listened to the conversation about parents being notified when there's a case of COVID in the classroom. I also listened to several board members/school officials state with confidence that this is happening while a board member was reporting that he is hearing that it is not happening. This is not happening on a consistent or timely basis. I am immunocompromised and taking injections on a weekly basis. If I am around someone who is sick the day I take this injection, it will knock me down hard. It's imperative that I am aware where my kids have been exposed to COVID, and I watch my email, phone, texts religiously to keep up to date on notifications. In the last two weeks, my daughter-in-kind in kindergarten at FES was exposed in her classroom twice, and I was not notified either time. I found out eventually because a friend of hers was in the third person, was the third person in the class to get it, and her mom messaged me and told me privately. I still have not been notified of the close contacts in that positive case either, which I know for a fact was reported to the school in the appropriate format. I was finally notified when her teacher got it. It took four people in the classroom and almost two weeks since the initial case before I was notified. This also isn't the first time this has happened to my family, and I know of at least 15/20 other people who have experienced the same. Additionally, I find the fact that we are not taking in-home tests as part of our dashboard to be frustrating as well. I know several children who have had COVID and only have the at-home test due to lack of finances to pay for a test and no insurance, or because they cannot get in for a test. Several pediatrician offices in Arnold/South County area have run out of tests or are only doing tests if there's a high-risk person in your household. The numbers are not correct if we are not using positive in-home tests as a part of the process. And since these numbers are driving which mitigation measures that are being used, then we should be doing our due diligence to make sure that we are using the most correct numbers possible. Lastly, I am concerned about shortening the counting of..." numbers down to five days from 10. There are still many school districts and businesses using 10 days as you are still contagious and can have spreader symptoms after day five. If the goal is to keep kids in school rather than virtual, like some schools have already had to do, then why are we taking the absolute minimum intervention approach? Please consider how these decisions are impacting families and the risk that it is putting some of our most vulnerable children and families in. And that was the last patron comment.
Thank you, JP. Moving on to 3.3 Superintendent Comments, Dr. Frigo.
Oh, I'll wait till JP gets the slides ready to roll, and well, there we are. We're ready to go. Okay, we'll start with the Project Lead the Way. Last Monday, we hosted a showcase of our Project Lead the Way programming for officials from Project Lead the Way themselves. Administrators and board members and representatives of the RDOT group, the company who generously gave us the $755,000 grant, visited our, visited our schools. For those who aren't familiar with it, Project Lead the Way is a computer science and engineering program that prepares students for STEM-related careers. We visited Antonia Middle School and Fox High School to see some amazing student projects, and boy, were they amazing. After the visits, we came to the Student Service Center where we heard from the CEO of Project Lead the Way, President Dr. Vince Bertram, along with a representative from the RDOT group, again, who provided the $755,000 grant. It was an awesome, amazing afternoon, and talking and celebrating with these students was so inspiring to see what they're learning and how they're growing on a daily basis. And so it was a great day, and I'll ask any board members, do any of you want to talk about what you saw, or if not, I'll move on?
It was very exciting, very impressive. I was impressed with the teachers. I was impressed with the students. And I was proud to know that these classes and projects are going on in our school, enabling our students to move into college and career readiness with a lot of skills. It was really exciting to see the possibilities that the students are offered.
Anyone else?
I would say, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, April.
No, go ahead, Vicki.
I, I just was gonna say that students were all actively engaged in their own individual projects, and then when you went to talk to them, they could articulate very clearly what they had done and how they had done it and explained it. And at the middle school and high school, it was really neat to see that happen. A lot of the kids from the high school already had put their application into several colleges, and were trying to decide which one to go to, which is a good problem to have. So I enjoyed it.
I was unable to attend this, but I do have a child who is in Project Lead the Way, and the staff at Fox High School, Sidigee, Sidigee and Mertens, it's just, those are the two men I know, and they are just amazing. And I'm so super excited that this is going to be trickling down to the middle school and elementary. So we are very, very blessed to get this huge grant.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Thank you. Next slide. All right, so some of you are probably aware, we sent out a notice today that we will have no school tomorrow due to the impending major winter storm. We're under a winter storm warning, as I'm sure most of you are aware. But I, there was a lot of banter on social media and questions about our process and timing for closing schools, so I thought I'd talk about that for a few minutes. In a normal situation where we're, we're looking at school the night of or right before school starts, myself, the Director of Transportation, and the Director of Facilities, we divide the district into thirds, and we head out about 3:30 in the morning, and we drive roads and determine the safety of students and staff getting to our buildings. We also then colla- I also then collaborate with other area superintendents what they're seeing, because a lot of our employees and others may be coming from their areas as well. But it, and ultimately, I'm always going to be very cautious when it comes to this and err on the side of student safety. The most difficult part of this, part of it is of calling school, is I know it's an imposition on our families, but also I understand that for many of our kids, it'll mean they don't get to get a breakfast or lunch that day. So that's always in the back of my head as well as I'm trying to make this decision. So we try to make the decision before 5 o'clock in the morning. I saw that several times in social media. We understand, we are bus drivers, start heading our way at 5:00. They have to hit the road at 6:00. And also, parents need to know because they have to make arrangements for their kids if they're not going to school. So we try to be cognizant of that as far as the timing. On a normal snow day, unlike a winter storm warning that's Snowmageddon that's coming, according to most weather services in the next couple of days. Also, I want to make sure people know, they, they've been asking me on social media and emails, I am aware of the ice storm of 2016 or 17, and of the, the impact that had on the district, and so that's in my rolodex as well as I'm considering what we do moving forward. All right, thank you. Next slide, please. So I wanted to share this slide with you. We, there was talk about the 2% in some of the public comment, but also a lot of questions from people. What you see is the updated numbers for our total student and staff population for the second semester. The middle column, you'll see the number of positive cases that would trigger masking at that building, the 2% threshold. And so as you look down there, you can see those numbers range from anywhere from 6 to up to 40, depending on the size of the building. And today at 11:00 AM, we pulled the numbers, and those are our current positive cases in each of our building. And you can see mo- most of the buildings have very low numbers at this time as far as positivity rates. So we wanted to share that with our public as well. You go to the next slide. This is a slide I incorporated at our last meeting. This comes to us, and what it shows is St. Louis, the first column, St. Louis County, the second column, St. Louis City, the third column, St. Louis, or St. Charles County, and then the fourth column is Jefferson County. And it compares the rise or fall of positivity rates over a 14-day period from week to week. And as, last time, if you remember, I talked about Gaskinade County was the one with consistently red currently. That's the Herman area. But as you can see, our column, Jefferson County, if cases are decreasing more than 10%, that's a green designation, and we've had that for quite a while now. So the prediction by a lot of infectious disease specialists that the surge was over and the decline would soon be coming seems to be coming true with the current data we're receiving right now. So wanted to share that with our public, so they can see some of the information we're utilizing as we monitor the COVID situation. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to 4.1 COVID mitigation plan. Dr. Frigo, what is your recommendation for going forward?
Going forward, I'd like us to go back to the 2% positivity threshold plan we had established prior to going to mandatory masks during the surge that occurred from the Omicron variant.
Hey, I'm just gonna go ahead and make a motion that we follow his recommendation and go to our original plan that was voted on a few weeks ago. So I'm making a motion to do that. Do I have a second?
Second, Chamberlain.
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Shaloo? You're muted.
There's been a lot of information about having the effective N95-type mask or those that are comparable for kids. Is there any way that we could have those, those kinds of masks available for those families and kids who are going to come to school but still fear that, that they may be exposed? From what I understand, there's, we're producing a lot of these now. Is there any way we can do that?
We placed an order through the co-op to get some of those, and John, do you know how many we now have on-site for district buildings to utilize?
We requested 5,000 and received an allocation of 960.
So we do have, we do have-
I do believe they're free at some of the drugstores, CVS, Walgreens.
Is there any way that we could, in our plan, add the, the, the comment that any parent that feels like they need to have an N95-type child, type mask for their child, that they need to contact us so that we can try to get one too?
Well, we have 900, like we said, Jim, 960 on-site. We definitely will make those available, but I don't know how long that supply would last, but we would definitely-
I'm not so sure that, I think a lot of people still feel comfortable with the cloth mask, that if we do have those, those particular students and families where they feel like that they're at risk, it would be nice to be able to provide that kind of mask for them.
Yeah, we can definitely make sure that we get those to the buildings for people to utilize. I think that, that makes sense.
Any other questions or comments?
I just have a comment or a question. What is our sub-fill rate at this time?
Let me see, we're, we're gathering that information. Let's see if I have it here, okay? Give me a second.
Monica said earlier, it's 100% for tomorrow.
If we're, if we're looking at just yesterday and today, so so far this week, we were around 77%. We've been, overall, for the whole year, we're around 73-ish percent. Last time, whenever we voted to go with the mask, it was 66%. So that's good that it's went up 11%.
Yes, and we can get you more detailed information by building, Michelle, or yeah, Michelle, for your question, so we can get you more of that tomorrow.
No, I was just looking for, to see progress, and we see progress. That's why we're going back to the 2% and we have staff to teach our kids. So that's what we're, we're doing this for.
All right.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor of returning to the 2% threshold in our mitigation plan?
Yes.
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 One opposed. Okay, that motion carries. Moving on to 4.2 graduations, St. Charles Family Arena, Dr. Cardona.
Thank you. So you have in your packet there the, the contract for the family arena for St. Charles. We did have graduation set for May 22nd, which was a Sunday, to be held at Shafitz Arena, and Shafitz called us about two and a half weeks ago and told us that they, their mitigation plan and their, what they're doing for COVID was going to require vaccines and or, and/or a negative COVID test from all of our participants. And we felt that was going to be a hardship on our families, so we reached out to the family arena, who we've used the last couple of years. And they did have an opening. Unfortunately, we have to move that to the 15th, which is the Sunday prior. They are still able to do both graduations on the same day. We are probably going to have to move Fox High School to an 11 o'clock time and keep the Segmond High School at 3:00, only because they asked for a little bit more time in between the ceremonies to do some cleaning. So, and they don't have any other mitigation plans in place at this point. They're just requiring open, clear bags so that they can see in there for safety reasons. So you'll see the contract. It is $30,000, and I'm asking the board to approve that for this year's graduation at the family arena.
So move, Shaloo.
That's our good yard.
Any questions?
I have one. Tammy, just remind everyone about the deposit you have on the Shafitz and that it's still good.
Yeah, so we do have a deposit that we've actually carried over the last three years at Shafitz, and they have agreed to hold that for us. Our, our hope is to, you know, be able to go back there at some point. And they're just going to continue to hold that for us, and we're going to use our family arena this year.
Any other questions? And it includes parking.
It does, and that is something that, that Shafitz does not include. So that is what causes a little bit of the difference in price as well.
All in favor?
Yes. Yes.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Three, second reading and adoption of the district calendar. Dr. Brock?
Yes, we're asking that the board approve the attached 22, 23 school year calendar for a second reading and adoption. No changes have been made since this was brought to the board for a first reading in January. And then just for information, we have attached the calendar committee's draft of the Y24, so the 23, 24 calendar as well, but that's just a draft, and it's just information at this time.
I did have a question from a few people asking about coming back to school on January 2nd, and the answer was, many surveys are worked through, and people want two-week block. And so with the first being on a Sunday, everybody does come back then on Monday. So the surveys are real important to everyone to fill those out completely. Anybody have any other questions, comments? If not, we need a motion to approve the 22, 23 calendar.
I make a motion to approve.
Second, Hanson.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay. 4.4 Permanent Substitute Positions, Dr. Brock?
So in order to help us improve some stability in our schools, we're asking the board to approve permanent subpositions for our buildings just for the remainder of this school year. And those positions would be paid $200 a day, and they would come with health insurance. And they don't come with any paid time off. We would be placing one permanent sub at every elementary, two at each middle school, and three at each high school. And of course, we would encourage any current subs, long-term subs, or just daily subs to apply for those positions.
Dr. Brock, there was some confusion about the 550 hours and people's ability to do this or subbing. Could you clarify that for people so they understand?
Yes, so we were under a waiver, retirees were under a waiver through December 31st that the 550-hour rule limiting the amount of time that retirees can work. We had a waiver that that was not in effect, that 550-hour limit. As of January 1st, that lim- that waiver has expired, and so everybody started at zero. So between now and the end of the school year, there would be barely, you'd really be pushing it, but close to enough time for somebody to possibly take one of these positions who is a retiree. But if by some chance these positions or other positions would still be in place next year, there would not be enough hours in the school year, because come August, that 550 hours would start over again, and we wouldn't be under a waiver. So right now, we basically have 550 hours that can all be spent in one semester rather than all spent or, or used over the course of a whole school year.
Thank you.
Carol? You're muted.
I make a motion, we approve permanent subpositions as requested.
I second that.
All in favor? Oh, you have a question?
I have a question. What do first teacher, what do first-year teachers make? I've just heard, you know, that they're upset that these permanent subs are going to make more than the first, than a first-year teacher would make. I understand it's just to the end of the year and it's emergency-type thing. And also, email Governor Parson, and I, I've done the same thing about maybe reinstating the waiver to help these retired teachers to help with our, to fill our sub-rate as well.
So first-year teachers start around 37, one-ish. I don't recall the exact number off the top of my head, but it's just over $200 a day if we were breaking it down to the hour or a daily rate. Subs that are in, currently under our current policy, not counting the permanent sub proposal, are long-term subs, like covering an illness or- Um our long-term subs like covering an illness or maternity leave, once they hit day forty-six, they begin receiving um first-year teacher pay as well, and that's retroactive all the way back to the start of that leave. So all forty-six days, for example. Or sixty days. So it's not something that's unheard of or something that doesn't already occur. Uh but this this two hundred dollars is just under that amount.
Thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to four point six purchase card authorization, uh Mr.
There um- Some pay, um summer school.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I skip one?
It's on the same page as a permanent sub.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, five, uh four point five revised summer school pay rates.
So we're requesting the board's approval for the attached summer school pay rates. Um prior to winter break, we brought uh revised classified hourly pay rates back to the board for summer school so that they would be in line with uh the newly approved classified salary schedule, step one. Um and now that we are working on staffing for summer school and this, the employee shortage is continuing across all sectors. Um we have had some concern about whether or not we've been, we'd be able to staff those positions. Um all of our summer school positions. And so we are bringing the attached pay rates for um primarily the salaried staff, um teachers, nurses, therapists, thing, things like that. Um and then there's also the possibility that we we may need to have two tiers of transportation for summer school if we have uh fewer drivers. Um and so we've added a rate for um a two-tier driver as well. Um and then the last thing that I I wanted to point out is just that these salaried pay rates for summer school, like the teachers and the nurses, have not had an increase in that pay rate for several years.
Many years.
Motion to, motion to approve the pay rates as presented.
Second. Second, Chamberlain.
All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Mr. Stewart, four point six purchase card authorization.
So you have in front of you the request to uh provide a a purchase card for Sidney Rodiak, who's our new administrative assistant to the director of professional development. Uh this position previously had a per- a purchase card. However, that person's left, so we need uh we're requesting to provide a purchase card to uh the new person in that position and uh per policy DJF is requires board approval.
We need a motion to approve this card.
So move shaloo.
Second, Mecle.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
We did get the other credit card back, right?
Yes.
All in favor?
Yes.
Anyone opposed? Okay, good deal. Five point one update on Prop P projects. I hope we've got our parents with us. Mr. Stewart, I think you've got some exciting news for us.
Um so I'm gonna wait a second here. Mr. Barbara Gallo is going, he's got some stuff to share with you. So um as he's coming in here and joins us and JP's got a uh some screen sharing to do for uh the items that Mr. Barbara Gallo is going to talk about. So I will turn it over to Scott.
Good evening. How's everybody doing?
Hello.
Hello. Hear me okay?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, great.
Oh, we can't see you.
Uh so I'm here to speak about the Prop P project status. Uh and I have a little slide here. I'm gonna go ahead and start. Hey JP?
Yes, sir.
Uh are you able to start that slide?
I have your slide. I have the first slide up on the screen right now.
Okay, I'm still seeing the Prop P project status. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Uh so the Fox uh School District, uh Board of Education proposed a general obligation bond authorization back on April seventh of two thousand twenty. Uh on March eighth, two thousand twenty, pursuant to executive order of the governor, uh the Missouri municipal elections were delayed until June second of two thousand twenty. Uh once that election did happen, our voters uh passed that with a seventy-five percent approval rate, which was pretty remarkable. Uh next slide JP. Uh so we have uh several different projects going on uh currently. So Antonia Elementary, we broke that into three phases. Uh so phase one, uh the project advertised on January the ninth of two thousand twenty-one. Bids were received on January twenty-eighth of two thousand twenty-one. A project was awarded to IFS for a sum of one million, one hundred eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Uh so if you guys are familiar with the renovations we did there at Antonia Elementary, that was the change out of HVAC. The update of the cabinets and casework, lighting, ceilings. Uh we also took care of some things with intercoms and stuff like that that we were having trouble with. Uh phase two of that project uh was advertised on May the eighth of two thousand twenty-one. Bids were received on July first of two thousand twenty-one. Uh the base project and alternate bids were awarded to SM Wilson uh for a sum of six million, thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Uh this is the actual addition that'll be two-story library classrooms in front of the building uh as well as the renovation of the main office. Uh since the new entrance, uh with the new addition will have the secured vestibule and things like that. This also includes the HVAC upgrade for the kindergarten wing. Phase three, uh this project was advertised back on January fifteenth of this year. Uh bids were, are to be received on February the eighth, uh so just over a week away. Uh we actually had a pre-bid meeting today uh for this project. This project is for some lighting upgrade in the kindergarten area as well as down in the uh fifth grade library, current library location of this building. Uh JP, go ahead, next slide. Merrimack Heights Elementary uh was a project uh that was advertised on May the eighth. Uh bids were received on July first, just at the same time that Antonia Elementary was. The base project and alternate bids uh were awarded to SM Wilson for a sum of seven million, four hundred nine thousand and seven hundred and ninety-three dollars. Uh and automatic controls, equipment systems for the HVAC controls of that equipment for a sum of eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars for a total of seven million, four hundred ninety-six thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars. This is for the two-story addition at Merrimack Heights, which will include a new office, secure vestibule uh as well as a new cafe kitchen. And the renovation of the old kitchen into kitchen and cafe into a STEM lab and uh uh library. So the total cost of projects that we are currently working on uh with BRS Architects is fourteen million, seven hundred nineteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars. Uh part of this is an estimated number because we have not received the bids yet on the phase three at Antonia Elementary. Uh but it is a fairly small project. Uh so we do have some estimated numbers for that, which we'll show later uh in the slide. Uh JP? Uh so we remember back in October of two thousand twenty, uh the Fox School District advertised an RFQ uh for architect services. Uh after presentations in December uh to the board, uh WM Idner Incorporated is selected to negotiate fees. Uh after the negotiations, uh architectural services are awarded to Idner on February second of two thousand twenty-one. Uh back in October of two thousand twenty, uh BRS was awarded to continue working with the building additions and renovations at Antonia Elementary and Merrimack Heights Elementary. JP? So this is our Prop P, uh fund usage as of now. Uh so we have at the top here, uh BRS phase one and its cost, uh that was roughly three percent of our total of the forty million dollar bond. Uh on phase two of Antonia Elementary, that was roughly fifteen percent. Uh the phase three uh is coming in just over one percent of that bond funds. Uh Merrimack Heights Elementary uh is right at eighteen and a half percent. Idner, uh we have two bids out currently uh with Idner. Uh those packages will be coming in on February fifteenth. So these two numbers are estimated. But the Fox bid number one uh is to include the addition at Fox High School. The new office renovations at Fox Middle School. Uh it'll also, the current office will be rearranged into a classroom. Uh at Fox High School, we are also going to do some renovations at the old science labs because they'll be moving into the new uh three-story addition. This also includes a secure vestibule uh for and uh Fox Elementary. Uh that number estimated uh right now is at sixteen million, seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, which is about forty-two percent of our uh forty million bond. Uh Sekman bid two uh is our other package is out currently. Uh this includes the addition at Sekman Middle School. So uh as you guys may or may not remember, uh we did a few different uh designs on this and after meeting with the building administrators, uh altered our plans a little bit. Originally, this was gonna be a few classrooms and a set of bathrooms in an addition. Uh due to the small size of their library, uh we added a library into this addition to be more appropriate with the size of that building and the amount of enrollment of the kids. Uh we still will have a few classrooms in this addition, uh as well as a set of bathrooms. Uh but to get the extra rooms we need, we're actually re-renovating the old library into two classrooms. So we'll still be getting five classrooms and a library, but our library uh being it's just more square footage, bigger building. Uh it did drive that cost up slightly uh from what we had originally projected. Uh in this bid package as well as your secure vestibule for the middle school, the secure vestibule for the elementary school and the science lab renovations and adding science labs at the Sekman High School. Uh these projects are expected to be just over twelve percent of the forty million bond package. Uh so we had a uh contingency amount that was set forth in the beginning of the project uh which is right at one and a half million or three point seven percent of the total package that we're uh working with. And then we have available funds right now. Uh so this number at about one point eight million uh or four and a half percent of the forty million that's left is what we are gonna work on our remaining secure vestibules. Uh I believe we have nine or ten beyond what has been done and what is expected to be done in the building additions and things like that at these locations. Uh Merrimack Heights will be getting a secure vestibule with their addition. Antonia Elementary will be getting theirs. Uh so then we have, I think, nine or ten sites afterwards that will be uh doing with the remaining. We also will have playgrounds coming out of this fund, uh paving, et cetera. Uh but again, these will be things as we get uh kind of these large forty-two percent of the project funds and twelve percent of the project fund numbers back, see where they actually come in. Uh that'll help us determine uh what those available funds are to start uh allotting these projects. Uh so right here is a uh little pie chart of kind of how things have been distributed. Uh you can obviously see the largest chunk there, kind of oranges at the sixteen million uh number. That is the Fox bid package one. Uh the second largest uh section is the Sekman bid package number two. Uh and then coming in behind that as an individual cost was the Merrimack Heights, which was bid as one project. Uh Antonia being broken into three phases uh is pretty similar uh amount to Merrimack Heights, but we had broken it into three phases uh for a couple of different reasons. One, so if we exceeded budget, uh there was things that we could do to uh continue with the projects on some levels and others that may have had to be altered. Any questions?
At what point are uh at Antonia Elementary, where where are they at right now? I know they finished the renovations with some of the um cla- older classrooms, but where are they on the new addition?
Okay, uh so this uh chart that JP just pulled up, uh you on here, I have everything laid out as far as uh going out to uh the election uh through the RFQ process, plan. Uh so phase one uh started in June of two thousand twenty-one. Uh we completed it in August, which was the HVAC upgrades and things like that. The phase two, which is the addition, uh we bid that and took those bids back back in July and they've actually been sitting idle due to long lead times of material. Uh which I'm sure we're all kind of familiar with, trying to get any household appliance or anything like that. Some things you just can't get. Uh things we're waiting for are like structural steel, uh roofing material. Uh so to help alleviate these uh start-stop problems we would have by not having material, uh we decided the best course and also to make the projects a little cheaper, uh they would delay that start until April of this year. Uh so they'll be breaking ground right before school lets out in May. Uh and that is the same at Merrimack Heights as well.
And that was an update we just got today in a uh construction meeting uh with uh with BRS and SM Wilson. Confirmed April breaking ground on those two projects, additions.
Any estimated time on when those possibly could be completed?
Uh we're looking at like an eighteen-month project. Uh so if we would be starting then, uh we would be moving in in the fall of twenty-three. So it had, you know, complete at summertime probably. And then fall, winter of twenty-three.
That is super exciting. Um I do have a question. Uh you mentioned phase three for Antonia Elementary. Can you allude to what that includes, the five hundred thousand?
Uh that is gonna be for uh ceiling and lighting, uh and some outlets being added and some casework in the classrooms on the uh kindergarten wing and as well on the fifth grade library wing or current library wing.
This is so awesome. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Uh Scott, I I've given us a really good report um as to where everything is going on with our two, two big projects in the elementary and the Fox High School. Um is it possible? Uh are you planning to do anything with the other buildings as far as the securing entrances and playgrounds this this summer or is that being put off even longer than that?
Uh so we have uh ready to go uh the secure vestibule package. Uh so once we see the bids come back in for the large projects, uh we have that ready to go to advertise, to bid and quite possibly, because some of them are pretty minor alteration of the buildings, uh things that could happen this summer. Obviously, some larger projects where there'd be uh like new storefront glass and big major changes, uh those would probably not be able to happen due to lead times this summer and that would be something that would roll into the following. Uh we do also have the project- Uh, we do also have the project at Guffy Elementary for the playground being installed, the new one. Uh, that will be breaking ground next month as well, March, I believe, middle of March, you told me.
Thank you so much. This is really, it's neat to see and very interesting to for you to continue to keep us updated on these projects. Thank you. I'm anxious to see both of the, well, actually all three of the buildings and and the progress that's been made.
So Scott, um, are you going to bid out the playgrounds for all of them together except for Guffy? Or are you going to do individual schools?
Um, so as of now, uh. Each one's kind of a separate situation of what they need. Uh, there will probably be groups lumped together, uh, because some of them are needing, whether it's retaining wall repair. Uh, some of the playgrounds are wanting just shade structures. You know, they may have pretty good playgrounds. They got pretty good retaining walls. Uh, hodge, for example, it's like, y- you know, in the middle of summer, you're just out there on the scorching earth because there's just not a lot of shade on those playgrounds. Uh, so they're more interested in the shade structure. Uh, so as we do this, we will group them together, uh, whether it's by cost, you know. Uh, or it could be by location for simplicity of managing those projects all at one time.
So are you saying that this summer is completely out of um. Had an option to get playgrounds started and any of the elementars except for Guffy?
Uh, as of now, um. Due to lead times, even where we are right now, uh, probably if you would order equipment, you wouldn't get it by this summer. Uh, from our project at Guffy and the length of time for him to start, uh, that's putting us to March of this year. Uh, so their lead times are sometimes running eight to ten months on playground equipment.
Anybody else have any other questions or comments? It's looking good. It's exciting. I know things have been delayed due to shortages and transportation of materials. Scott, thank you very much for preparing this and presenting it tonight.
Yes, thank, thank you, Scott. I think it is going to be exciting that we start breaking ground before school lets out at those two buildings. I think that'll provide some great energy behind these projects. Kids and families will see that work being done. So thanks, Scott, for your work on that.
Just, just one more comment or question. Um. I know that money is a big issue, even uh from the beginning with the bids and and things uh have cost more and things have had to be added. Are are we still in tune to saying that we are going, each building is still going to get part of Prop P funds?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then um. Mr. Stewart, can you mention what we chatted about a little bit today?
So we have um. We sold forty million dollars with the bonds. We have three years from the date of sale to spend the bonds. Uh, so that would be, we sold those in March, uh, May the sixth of two thousand twenty-one. So we've got until May of two thousand twenty-four. Um, so the regulations do allow some reway to be eighty-five percent spent. Um, by that three-year period. And actually, as long as you have a plan uh in place and moving forward and also, you know, I mean. Supply chain issues, COVID, and we can document all that, we uh should be able to stay in compliance with that. But um. From, from what we see going on with uh Antonia Elementary and Merrimack Heights uh this morning. Uh, and you know, dig dates starting in in April and moving forward and, you know, fifteen plus months, uh, we shouldn't have any problem spending that. We're currently at about seventy-five percent uh once these bid packages come back in uh in February. Allocated. Correct. Not spent. Allocated. Correct.
Anyone else have a comment or question? All right, thank you very much. Okay, we're moving on to six point one, uh, first reading apology policy, GCBDA. Dr. Brock.
Yes, so we are asking that the board accept um this policy for a first reading. Um, and we would bring it for a second reading at our March first meeting. Um. The modification to this policy is really just to be in line with the recent change that was made to GDBDA. So GDBDA is related to um support staff. Uh, and the changes made to that policy address vacation days, but they also address personal days. Um, for support staff. So. In the past, personal days, staff get four a year. And at the end of the year, like June thirtieth, any that are not used can roll over into sick days. But for those staff who were separating, um, like retiring or or whatever else at the end of the year, they didn't have the option to sell back those days. Those four personal days. And so we were seeing. Um, we were seeing a lot of people use those days because they're kind of use them or lose them, right? Um, so that change to GDBDA only applied to support staff. Um, and so this reading of GCBDA is for certified staff, professional staff to allow them. Uh, the same thing that the recent change to the other policy allowed to support staff, which is to um. Sell back those four personal days. Um, at the end of the year upon separation, just like they already can with their sick days. So that way there's consistency among the two groups.
Make a motion to accept this for first reading.
Second.
Anybody have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you. Seven point one, consent agenda. Dr. Brock.
We are just asking the board's approval for all attached higher stipends, modifications, separations.
We need a motion to accept those.
Motion to accept.
Second. Target.
All in favor? Any opposed? Hey, I need a motion to adjourn and return to closed.
Hold on, Judy. Judy, just one thing. With the board's action on consent agenda, let the community to know we just were able to employ ten more subs for the.
Ah, great.
So.
Very good.
Yeah.
Very good.
All right, sorry, Judy. I'm done now.
No, good deal. That's great. That that's wonderful to let them know that all of those were on that consent agenda. Uh, six point one, we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Go back to close, correct?
Yes. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for listening, and we'll see you in.